All right, good evening. I'm Rob Walters, Board Chair, and I'm going to call our Cabarrus County Board of Education Monday, October 13 business meeting to order. And do a quick introduction to the folks, our representatives up here on the dais. I'll start on my left. We have our Teacher of the Year representative, Madison Little, welcome. We've got Board members Shannon Lancaster, Board Member Catherine Moore, Board Member Sam Treadaway, our Superintendent, Dr. Kapicki. And on my right, we've got Vice Chair Greg Mills, Board Member Pam Escobar, and Board Member Melanie Freeman. And with that, I'd like us all to stand as we welcome our presentation of colors and the National Anthem.
Colors are in hot. Carry colors. Forward, arch. Color dark. Oh. Right, rotate colors, rotate.
Presenting tonight's colors are members of the Central Cabarrus High School, Air Force JROTC, and their personnel includes Cadet Staff Sergeant Nathan Alvarez, Cadet Airman First Class Luis Ramos Chavez, Cadet Technical Sergeant Nikisha Sharif, and Cadet Second Lieutenant Justin Ramos.
Present, colors. Order, colors. Post. Right, paste. Forward, arch.
Honoring America tonight with the playing of our National Anthem, we're members of the Central Cabarrus High School Brass Quintet. And the names include Sawyer Thomas, Lexie Tate, Camden Simpson, and Gianna Clerge. The Director of the Central Cabarrus Band Program is Mr. Nick Carl. Thank you.[284.58][284.58](applause)
Please be seated. Appreciate the students' performance to kick off our meeting. Also wanted to recognize our SRO for the evening, Sergeant Mark Drummond. He's SRO at Cox Mill Elementary School. Thank you for being here. And I see we have an elected official, Laura Lindsay, with the County Commissioner. Thank you for being here. So with that, we need to set our agenda for the evening. That's been posted on Board Docs. And I would need a motion and a second to approve the agenda for the evening. Motion by Mr. Treadaway. A second, a second by Ms. Freeman. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Okay, our agenda is set for the evening, and we're going to go right into our recognition. So we start with our Impact Through Education Awards, and we have Mr. Phil Furr coming to the podium. Welcome.
Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Kapicki, good evening. Tonight, we will present Impact Through Education Awards to students and staff at Mount Pleasant Elementary School and Central Cabarrus Health Sciences Institute. Our sponsors for the Impact Awards are our friends at Equitable. Before we get started with the awards, I'd like to offer our sincere thanks and gratitude to Equitable for its continued sponsorship of the Impact Through Education Awards. Tonight, Equitable continues their 16th year partnering with us to honor those making an impact in our schools with this award. We appreciate their support and thank them for helping us celebrate and recognize deserving students and staff. We also want to say a word of thanks to our Cabarrus Regional Chamber and to Concord Trophy Center for providing us with the award plaques each month. Now on to tonight's awards. May I have the Mount Pleasant Elementary Administrative Team come forward, please? Our first honoree from Mount Pleasant is Faith Markley. Faith, please come forward with your family.
Faith is the kind of student who notices when others need a helping hand and quietly steps in to offer support. Whether it's encouraging a classmate who is struggling or lending a listening ear to a peer who just needs a friend, she brings kindness and patience to every situation. A supporter and assistant to many, Faith has a gift for making others feel seen, valued, and supported. She also celebrates the accomplishments of those around her. When her classmates experience success, big or small, she shares in their joy as though it were her own. Her compliments are genuine, her encouragement heartfelt, and her positivity contagious. A member of the school kindness club, Faith takes pride in leading in our school and among her peers. In addition to her leadership in the classroom, she is also an athlete, representing our community on the softball field. There, she demonstrates the same teamwork, determination, and respect that she brings to her daily interactions. Her ability to lift others up, both on and off the field, makes her a role model for her peers. Faith reminds us that making an impact doesn't always mean standing in the spotlight. It often comes through acts of kindness, encouragement, and integrity that ripple outward to create a stronger, more caring school community. Congratulations, Faith. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Mount Pleasant Elementary School.[512.41][512.41](applause)
Our next honoree from Mount Pleasant is Gage Mendoza. Gage, please come forward with your family.
Gage is a young man who is responsible and dependable, always on task, and consistently gives his very best effort in the classroom. What truly makes him stand out is the way he cares for others. He is quick to help his peers when they are struggling, kind to everyone he meets, and generous with his encouragement. He is a tremendous hard worker and a model among his peers. Gage approaches each day with a smile and finds joy in everything he does. That joy radiates to those around him, lifting his classmates, brightening his teacher's day, and creating an environment where everyone feels encouraged and valued. His example shows us that leadership is not just about achievement, but about the way we treat others and the energy we bring into our community. He reminds us that a single student's attitude can make an entire classroom stronger, kinder, and more connected. By living out responsibility, respect, and joy each day, he has become a role model for his peers and a source of pride for our school. Congratulations, Gage. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Mount Pleasant Elementary School.[646.54][646.54](applause)
Also from Mount Pleasant is Support Staff Member Amy Douglas. Ms. Douglas, please come forward with your family.
Ms. Douglas exemplifies the very spirit of service and dedication. No matter what the need may be, teaching, event planning, covering a class, running the daily news, or stepping in to support the front office, she is ready and able to meet every challenge. Her willingness to take on any role shows not only her versatility, but also her deep commitment to students and staff. No matter what is asked of her, she jumps in without hesitation, always with a positive attitude and willingness to make things happen. What sets her apart is not just her versatility, but the heart and care she brings to everything she does. Students see her as a role model, staff rely on her as a trusted teammate, and the entire school benefits from her presence. Because of her contributions, our school runs more smoothly, our students feel more supported, and our community is stronger. She embodies the idea that every role, big or small, makes a difference in helping children succeed. Congratulations, Amy. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Mount Pleasant Elementary School.[760.82][760.82](applause)
And finally, from Mount Pleasant is Teacher Krista Saxman. The Saxman, please come forward with your family.
Krista Saxman is a first-grade teacher whose leadership, innovation, and dedication make a profound difference in our school every single day. She consistently supports her grade-level team with fresh and creative ideas, constantly seeking out new best practices to implement in her classroom and share with colleagues. Her collaborative spirit, thoughtfulness, and guidance strengthen her team and have a lasting impact on the overall success of our school. She also plays a vital role in our school improvement efforts, helping shape initiatives that move our school forward. She is passionate about growing a new generation of teachers, both at home and through her work supporting student teachers and new staff. What makes her truly exceptional is the care and attention she gives to every student. She knows the needs and hearts of all her learners, particularly those who require additional interventions, and works tirelessly to ensure every child has the opportunity to succeed. Her classroom is a space where students feel seen, challenged, and inspired to do their best. Beyond her expertise and leadership, she brings joy, energy, and positivity to everything she does. She inspires both students and colleagues alike through her dedication, her ideas, and the genuine care she shows to everyone she encounters. Her work reminds us all of the profound impact a teacher can have, not just academically, but in nurturing confidence, curiosity, and a love of learning at a very early age. Every child deserves the love, care, and attention of a teacher like Ms. Saxman. Congratulations, Krista. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Mount Pleasant Elementary School.[906.14][906.14](applause)
We will now continue with our October Impact Through Education Awards by welcoming the Cabarrus Health Sciences Institute. May I have the CHSI Administrative Team come forward, please? Our first honoree from CHSI is Miley Louder. Miley, please come forward with your family.
Miley was born in Concord and raised in Mount Pleasant. She likes to read, play the piano, and is currently teaching herself to play the guitar. After finishing her bachelor's degree, she wants to continue with school to get a master's and a doctorate in nursing. She hopes to be either a pediatric or women's health nurse practitioner. Miley's teachers say she is an outstanding student who consistently demonstrates initiative, hard work, and respect for others. She distinguishes herself as a student leader through active participation in HOSA and Skills USA, as well as through meaningful volunteer efforts, including her role in supporting the recent open house. Miley's dedication to the health sciences reflects her strong sense of purpose, yet she also exemplifies intellectual curiosity and engagement across all areas of study, showcasing her well-rounded character. Congratulations, Miley. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Cabarrus Health Sciences.
Our next honoree from CHSI is Pratisha Pradam. Pratisha, please come forward with your family.
Pratisha was born and raised in Virginia to Indian parents, and from a young age, she was encouraged to value both education and community. She has always been passionate about learning and determined to push herself towards new challenges. She enjoys playing volleyball, dancing, and reading, and notes they have taught her discipline, teamwork, and creativity. Pratisha's future goal is to pursue a Doctor of Medicine degree with the hope of attending medical school at UNC Chapel Hill. She is especially interested in a career in medicine because it combines her love of science with a desire to help others. She is motivated by the idea of making an impact on people's lives and using education to give back to her community. Her teachers say every day, Pratisha walks down the hall with a smile on her face, saying hello and good morning to all her teachers. Pratisha, over the course of her freshman year, volunteered in multiple classes to take the extra step in tutoring students who needed help. While in class, she makes everyone feel welcome and gladly partners with anyone. Pratisha is an all-around awesome kid. Congratulations, Pratisha. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Cabarrus Health Sciences.
Next, from CHSI, is Staff Member Bonnie Clay. Ms. Clay, please come forward with your family.
Bonnie was born and raised in Concord. She attended Concord High School and UNCC after high school. She went back to school in 2021 at RCCC, where she earned a degree in information technology. Her hobbies include gardening. She has two kids and one grandchild and three dogs. Bonnie's colleagues say Bonnie is a Swiss Army knife. She can answer phones, push buttons for the door, build a schedule, and cut checks simultaneously. CHSI runs because Bonnie's there. Without her, they would be lost. She is greatly appreciated for her competence, work ethic, and most importantly, her enormous heart. Bonnie is genuine, hardworking, and always the first to jump in when someone needs help in a pinch. Her patience, honestly, is the most I've ever seen in a person, and it gets tested on a regular basis. Through it all, she stays steady, kind, and dependable. We're so lucky to have her on our team, and this recognition is just a small way to say thank you for everything you do. Congratulations, Bonnie. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Cabarrus Health Sciences.
And finally, from CHSI, is Counselor Taisha Robinson. Ms. Robinson, please come forward with your family.
Taisha was born and raised in Winston-Salem, North Carolina. She attended NCANT State University, earning a Bachelor's in Psychology and a Master's in School Counseling. She is currently attending the University of the Cumberland's in their Counselor Education and Supervision PhD program. Along with being a professional school counselor, she is a licensed mental health counselor and national certified counselor as well. Her hobbies are traveling, trying anything adventurous, and creating memories with her daughter Skylar. Taisha's colleagues say Ms. Robinson has always gone above and beyond in her work to help students with issues that they may be having while at school. She has always gone above and beyond with helping staff members and coordinating with each of us to ensure that we are prepared to be educators and role models for our students. Ms. Robinson is an exceptional school counselor whose expertise and dedication have an immeasurable impact on our health sciences early college community. She provides students and parents with skilled, personalized guidance in a wide range of areas, including academic scheduling, credit planning, testing, college, and career opportunities. Her leadership extends beyond individual counseling. She plays an essential role in coordinating programs such as the National Honor Society and Young Professors, ensuring that students have meaningful opportunities to grow both academically and personally. Congratulations, Taisha. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Cabarrus Health Sciences.
This concludes our Impact Awards presentations for tonight. Congratulations to all our recipients, and thanks again to our partners, Equitable and the Cabarrus Chamber of Commerce, for your partnership.
Thank you, Mr. Furr. Okay, next is 4.02, the Hilbush Ford Teacher of the Month, and we have Dr. Michael Williams at the podium.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board Members, Dr. Kapicki, and to our viewing audiences, both here and those watching the livestream. It is my pleasure to recognize our Hilbush Ford Teacher of the Month for October. We would like to offer our sincere thanks and gratitude to Mr. Tim Vaughn and his team at Hilbush Ford for their tremendous generosity and continued sponsorship of this wonderful recognition program. Our Hilbush Ford Teacher for the Month of October is Abigail Hannigan, a social studies teacher at Central Cabarrus High School. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Hannigan, her family, and any members of the Central Cabarrus High School Administrative Team in attendance to please come forward. I'd also like to recognize tonight, Hilbush Ford General Manager Josh Forrester, who is going to join Ms. Hannigan for our presentation this evening. Ms. Hannigan, you were nominated by a student for this award tonight, and I'd like to share the nomination the student submitted. The student wrote, "I believe Ms. Hannigan creates an outstanding learning environment for her students. She is always willing to offer help when needed and shows great patience when someone is struggling to understand. Her teaching style makes class both enjoyable and engaging, while still ensuring that we grasp the material in a clear and meaningful way. She truly cares about each of her students and consistently encourages us to succeed. By fostering a safe, supportive, and welcoming environment, she helps every student feel comfortable and motivated to do their best." Ms. Hannigan, thank you for the impact you have made to teach, engage, and inspire the students in your classroom and the families of Central Cabarrus High School, and congratulations on your selection as the Cabarrus County Schools Hilbush Ford Teacher of the Month.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Next, we have 4.03. This is the October Everyday Hero Award, and we have Dr. Jonathan Bowers and Mr. Matt Hurlacher coming to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening to you, good evening to members of the Board, and Dr. Kapicki. I'll be presenting this award on behalf of Mr. Hurlacher tonight and our transportation team. It's once again my pleasure to be able to come before you tonight and be able to recognize this month's Everyday Hero Award recipient. Sponsored by Great Wolf Lodge, this monthly award recognizes a member from our auxiliary services team who consistently goes above and beyond by impacting the lives of others through kindness, selflessness, and an unwavering impact and dedication to service. This month's recipient is Ms. Pam Mills, Lead Bus Driver for Northwest Cabarrus Community, for Cabarrus County Schools. Unfortunately, Ms. Mills could not be with us tonight due to a last-minute conflict. But I still want to take a moment to be able to recognize what she's done and what she's meant for our students, our families, and certainly the staff of the Northwest community. Ms. Mills has been with us for 36 years, and in that time, she is someone who truly represents the heart and spirit of our school district, and her unwavering commitment to service is commendable. Pam began her career with Cabarrus County Schools nearly four decades ago, and throughout that time, she has been known as a safe, dependable, and caring driver who always puts students first. For years, she has been a trusted presence in the Northwest Cabarrus community, loved by parents, respected by peers, and adored by the children that she serves. But what makes Pam stand out isn't just her skill behind the will, it's her kind and giving heart. She's the first person to reach out when someone is facing a difficult time, whether it be sending a card, preparing a meal, or just scheduling a visit to let that individual know that they're not alone in their time of need. That quiet compassion has fostered a sense of family, not only within the Northwest community, but within our Transportation Department as a whole. Pam's 36 years of service reflect more than just dedication. They reflect her love for the work that she does. does, the pride in her community, and a genuine commitment to doing the right thing every single day. She is the true definition of an everyday hero. Pam, though you're not here with us tonight, please know how much you are appreciated and celebrated. On behalf of Cabarrus County Schools and our entire transportation department, we thank you for your decades of service, your compassion, and the positive example you've set for us each and every day. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to the next one, which we're all very proud of. It's 4.04, STEM School of Distinction, and we have Allison Whitaker and Sarah Reeves. Welcome.
I'd like to call for the podium, Mr. Thomas and Margaret Glenn, who are the coaches of Northwest Cabarrus. I'm pleased to be here tonight to recognize Northwest Cabarrus High School. They were acknowledged by the North Carolina Department of Instruction State Board of Education as a STEM school of this station in September. And they were recognized for a high-quality culture of STEM programming, along with a small group of other schools across the state. And Mr. Thomas, Ms. Margaret Glenn, and Mr. Jeff Martin, who is not here tonight, were there to be recognized and received a plaque and a banner by the Department of Public Instruction. So I want to recognize this honor.
So we know a lot of hard work went in to that, so we appreciate all the efforts. Moving on to the next section, which is approval of minutes. We have our minutes from September 8th and September 15th that are on the board docs for review. Anybody have any comments or changes to those? If not, I would need a motion and a second to approve the minutes for those two minutes. Thank you, Ms. Lancaster. Catherine Moore for second. Further discussion, let's vote. All in favor are approving the minutes for September 8th and September 15th. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody oppose? Okay, our minutes have been adopted. Moving on to Section 6, which is Chair and Superintendent Comments. As far as for me, I think we learned that today, this week is National School Lunch Week, so we, on behalf of the board, would like to show, say our appreciation for all those that are working to provide nutritious meals for breakfast and lunch for our students. It's a lot of hard work and a lot of love that they put into that, and we really appreciate all those efforts. So with that, I will move on to 6.02 with Superintendent Comments, Dr. John Kupicki.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. I'd like to echo those comments and begin today to remind everyone that, as Mr. Walter said, it is National School Lunch Week, and that healthy nutritious meals fuel our students' successes every day. We are grateful for the school nutrition professionals who serve with care and excellence every day to plan menus, source quality ingredients, and ensure every child has access to a balanced meal. Their work supports learning, well-being, and a welcoming school community. Thank you to our cafeteria teams, our local partners, and our families for championing healthy choices for kids across Cabarrus County Schools. And again, a special thank you to all these school nutrition folks that do the work every single day. Without you, we wouldn't open the doors. It's amazing to walk in any school in this district and see the amount of work that takes place on any school nutrition team and any school in our district. They're an amazing group of people. They do tremendous work, and beyond all the food they give to our kids, the thing that you notice is the fact that they engage with our children on a daily basis, and there's a lot of love and compassion in their interactions with our students. It's really nice and a wonderful thing to see, and it just builds really good school culture. So I commend them, as I do our administrators, because it also is an appreciation of our principals' month this month. So I want to commend our principals for their leadership and the work that they do every day in our schools and working with our parents, our community, and then, obviously, most importantly, our students. Their leadership is definitely one of the shining examples as to why we are so successful here in that partnership and collaboration with our teachers, our students, and our parents, our community, I think just exemplifying all the wonderful things that take place in Cabarrus County. So as we close the first quarter of the school year, I want to commend our students, staff, and families for reaching this important milestone. The hard work, perseverance, and dedication shown across our classrooms and campuses reflect that spirit of excellence that defines Cabarrus County Schools. Thank you to our families for your continued support and partnership. It plays a vital role in our students' success and strengthens the sense of community that makes our schools so special. And as we begin the second quarter tomorrow, let's continue building on this positive momentum. Stay engaged, set new goals, and take pride in every step that you take forward. The best part of our school year is still ahead, and I look forward to all that we are going to accomplish together this school year. Reminder to all of our parents and students, the FASC is now opened. The online free application for federal student aid is open. This is an important milestone for our seniors and their families as they take the next step toward college and career opportunities. Completing the FASC early helps ensure access to the greatest amount of financial aid, including grants, scholarships, and work-study programs. We encourage all students and families to take this time to complete the application, reach out to your school's counseling team if you need assistance. And again, I encourage our families, don't hesitate to ask for help if you need help with the FASC form. I know how daunting and intimidating that form can be, and everyone's nervous to fill it out. Our schools are ready to help, and our counselors are expert at filling that form out. We encourage our parents to, you know, please fill it out. When you think you may not get some grant money or some academic scholarship money or some financial aid, you might be surprised at what is available to you, but not filling the FASC out doesn't even give you a chance. So please, fill that FASC out, and if you need help, let us know. And again, a reminder this week, our Cabarrus County Schools will hold its fourth annual Future Fairs. That's October 15th, 2025, which is Wednesday, at the Cabarrus Serene Event Center. This event features our Program Choice Fair, as well as College Fair, Career Fair, and Military Recruiters. This, again, has been one of our best-attended community events, and we look forward to seeing our families on that night. Our Program Choice Schools will be on hand to answer any questions, as well as more than 100 college, military, and career recruiters. So Program Choice applications will open on Wednesday, October 15th, for the 2026-27 school year, and you may find out more about the Futures Fair, school open houses, and the application process by visiting our district website. Then finally, a reminder to everyone that on November 12th at 6:00 p.m., the Cabarrus County Schools will host the second of two community meetings as part of the stakeholder engagement process for the Coltrane Webb STEM Elementary Attendance Boundary Project. This meeting will be held in the gym at Arbrow McCallister STEM Elementary School, and will be led by Dr. Bowers. Thank you, Mr. Walters.
Thank you, Dr. Kupicki. We'll move on to Section 7, which is our guest speakers. So these are guest speakers who have signed up in advance. They've provided a topic, as they've reviewed the conduct and guidelines that are listed on our board docs. And I've got one, two, three, four individuals that have signed up, and our first name is Paul Wannish. Welcome to the podium. It says you are with a group. Can you share with us what that group is? Activate your microphone.
Sorry, I saw the clock. It's a group for underserved student individuals in the county.
Okay, and speaking as a group, you get five minutes. You have five minutes as a group.
Good evening, board members and staff. I wanted to compliment the district on parts of the district's support of pupils that are gifted. Most apparent in the elementary support provided by the pullout for AIG classes each week. This provides the active minds, the ability to handle more education every few days. This is continued into the start of middle school, but then falls off by each year and by diversity. In middle schools, pupils can get a skip on math, even if they already demonstrated the proficiencies. It's called AAMS, but it's actually Class Code 20092Y0. That's the state codes. Then there's also Double Accelerated, which is actually a Class Code 20122Y0. In subsequent years, these Double Accelerated get high school credits through two other state codes. The same for English, which is a different code. But after acceleration through sixth and seventh, eighth is just regular classes with no acceleration. What options are not being considered? There are over 200 classes that could be offered, maybe even done through alternate-day offerings. The fields could be included are CTE, science, social studies, world languages, and science biology, physical science, chemistry, and earth environment sciences could all be considered. The world language options are so large, we don't even mention them. This is clearly a future consideration, but by seventh grade, the events' characteristics start to disappear in classes but continue to thrive in the pupils. Moving on to consistency between schools and classes, I believe that there should be a policy to address the completely different approach each school takes to education. Test retake is an obvious topic. Who can retake the test? That's what test grade level. How is the retesting grade associated with the initial test? Highest of the two, average of the two, max score between tests of some number, like 80%. Each school creates their own policy, and it can affect the school's overall performance. I heard of some kids that would fail the first test so they could see what the questions are, and then in the retest, they would know what questions and would know that they could perform 100. Then there is a weekly lesson plan that the parents count on to aid their pupils. These are critical, and few teachers actually put them on instruction.com and share them. I'm attaching a content of the best I've seen. Finally, assignments, grades, and test results also need to be posted as soon as possible. And of course, there's the authoritative data source problem. We had a case where the parent yelled at the kids because they saw that the student was exempt from a quarterly test, and the student's portal showed not graded. So there's an inconsistency. Student thought he was just not graded. Parent thought it was some other class. And then Canvas doesn't always match Infinite Campus. We need a single source of complete data for pupil information. And no comment would be complete without talking about the CCS infrastructure. You know that you haven't complied with the building codes for decades, have even been cited by the county building inspector, and just really still do not have a plan for changing anything. After further investigation, it appears you've also ignored county and municipalities' development ordinances. Everyone seems to like different ordinances or are subject to it, and I lean towards the one that's in the county. The Cabarrus County Development Ordinance requires public schools to have a complete description of the facility, minimum of two roads providing at least two access points, generally accepted, circulation not disturbed, nor access on adjacent roads or streets, that's always broken, stacking distance for cars shall not impact adjacent right-of-ways, never happens, alternate transportation routes are conducive to incorporating into the site sidewalks and adjacent neighborhoods. So those are all kind of messed up. Thank you for your time, and don't forget, this is the month that Dr. Kupicki has to complete his attestation on the October 25th Cabarrus County Biennial Monthly Report, and this is a New North Carolina state statute requiring this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wannish. So I would like to welcome next is Kavia Saxina to the podium. And you are a student, correct? You're a student. Welcome. If it's red, you can talk.
Okay, okay. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Kavia, and I'm a junior at Hickory Ridge High School. I also serve as the president of the Cabarrus County Youth Commission, where me and my executive board and I advocate for students across our county. I'm here tonight because far too many students feel overwhelmed, unsupported, and unheard in a system that continues to measure success by GPA alone. Across the country, test scores are falling, and teen mental health is in crisis. According to the CDC, anxiety and depression among teens has risen by over 25% since 2020, and yet, instead of offering stronger support, students are still judged by numbers, as if that's all we are. But GPA is not and should not be the only measure of a student's potential. GPA doesn't show the student who works part-time to support their family. GPA doesn't tell the story of the student athlete who stays up late to finish assignments after long practices, mentally and physically exhausted, but still pushing forward. It doesn't reflect a student who is actively engaged in local government, volunteering, or community leadership. It doesn't recognize students like myself and many others who are working every day to give back to our community and our country, not just to pass the next test. And yet, we are often overlooked in scholarships, college admissions, academic opportunities, simply because of a number on a transcript. That doesn't tell the whole story. We're told that we can recover if we fall behind, but academic recovery is weak. Yes, we can retake a class, but the impact on our GPA confidence and mental health is already done. One tutoring session or deadline extension doesn't undo months of stress and struggle. When students are already behind, the system doesn't lift us up, it leaves us behind. So tonight, I'm asking you to consider real change. Make mental health a real priority. One overworked counselor isn't enough. We need licensed support available and accessible to all students. Strengthen academic recovery by offering flexible retake options, consistent tutoring, and meaningful grade forgiveness policies. Make ACT and SAT prep free and accessible so students aren't left behind, simply because they can't afford the resources. And most importantly, stop viewing GPA as the only indicator of a student's value. Support students who are engaged in civic life, leadership, and public service, the ones who are already giving back and continue doing so. Leadership in local government, sports, arts, and other extracurriculars should be valued just as much as academic grades. These activities show skills like responsibility, teamwork, and commitment, which are crucial for success in college and life. In fact, colleges should explore ways to formally incorporate these efforts into a student's GPA or overall academic evaluation. Doing this would give more of a complete and fair picture of a student's achievements and potential, especially for those who are making a difference in their communities while managing other challenges. We are more than test scores, we are more than a GPA. We are leaders, volunteers, caregivers, workers, and future changemakers. We're asking to be seen and to be supported. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have listed Lee Brown. Welcome to the podium.
Red zone. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Superintendent, and members of the board. I've got two items to bring to you this evening. One is the uneven treatment of our arts programs in the public schools as compared to athletics. The current budget decision to increase the cost of the special transportation was not applied to athletics as it was applied to our bands and to our field trips, thus meaning that for one of our local high schools, to get the band into the Concord Christmas Parade will cost them an extra $1,500. They don't have that kind of money, and they can't go back to their boosters again because this came on them at the beginning of the school year without warning, so they did not have a chance to fix their budget. It does not make sense to give athletics a cut in cost while raising the cost to the kids for whom band is their athletics. And also, the band brings so much to our community when they show up in that parade. My ask of you is that you correct the policy such that a budget change like that would have appropriate time for them to plan for it, and that you make an adjustment somewhere in the budget so that we can ensure that our children are allowed to participate in a community effort like the Concord Christmas Parade. The second item I would like to bring to you is a very serious one. You've all been made aware by myself and others in the county and in the country about a teacher at JM Robinson who is publicly calling for the death of his political opponents. He gleefully celebrated the death of Charlie Kirk and has said that others in the fascist regime should expect to be killed as well. This is a violation of the code of conduct he signed as a teacher. To quote from that code, "He signed a commitment to the profession to uphold the professional standard of ethics and conduct, to avoid dishonesty, fraud, and misrepresentation, acknowledge and respect diverse views while working collaboratively to shape educational goals, to not use official authority to interfere with or discriminate against others, to maintain appropriate professional boundaries in all interactions, including social media." I don't want to hear that he has a First Amendment right to call for the death of others when this is a man in the school system who has the ability to shape young minds. When I checked the JM Robinson site before I came this evening, he showed as an active faculty member, and I know that by law, you cannot say a lot of things about personnel, but I will just say that he should never have a job in this school system. He should be removed immediately without delay, receive no financial benefits for having said these things, and receive no special treatment. This school system has children's minds in their hands. and someone who purports to be a math teacher who is talking about the death of his political opponents is poison. That upends everything that we have been told is good in this county and everything that is good for our children. I ask that you remove him immediately. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. So our next and last is Courtney Steinberg. Welcome to the podium.
Good evening, board and Superintendent Kapicki and others. So tonight, I'm here to just ask you to support the program choice presentations, especially for Concord Middle and Concord High. So as someone who has a child slated to go to those two schools, I have been involved in the meetings around Concord Middle especially. I understand that school has struggled, and I want my child to go there. But I don't want my child to go to a school that's not prepared for my child. And I appreciate the work that has gone into that school over the last several months, and I think Dr. A. is going to take it to where it needs to be. I have full confidence in him, and I think with the addition of this choice program, that school is going to thrive. My concern with schools that are struggling personally for my child is that those schools tend to focus often on the kids who aren't quite making it, as they should. Those kids need more support, but my child's thriving. So I need a school that's going to be able to support my child in continuing to thrive, and I think with this new program, he gets that opportunity. What really is interesting to me about that is the four high school credits that he will have the opportunity to get out of that program. Kind of goes to what Mr. Wannish was talking about, honestly. So that's some opportunity right there for those eighth graders to get those extra supports. It also helps because he's part of the dual-language program. So this is a way to bring that program to this school and merge it with the STEM interest that he has. This is an excellent program for my kid, and I think it will be an excellent program for a lot of kids in the district. I also think that the program for Concord High is really interesting. As a 45-year-old, middle-aged mom who doesn't quite understand all the new tech, AI is a little scary to me. But I also know that we can't get in the way of our progress. We can't get in the way of our kids having the ability to access these things. It is where we are, it is where we are going, and we need to support them. I also am very thankful to Ms. Reeves and her team and Dr. Kapicki's support. Don't get crazy, I'm going to give you some props for this program and the way it's partnering with our community. We are struggling with funding, we all know that. You don't have control over that, I get it. So how do we help our kids and our community? We have to partner, and I appreciate our business partners in the community who are stepping up, our nonprofit partners who are stepping up, and individuals in the community who are stepping up to fill the void where our legislatures are not. So thank you, please support these programs, have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Steinberg. All right, move on to Section 8, which is the report sections. We have one report here, which is 8.01, Advanced Placement AP Highlights. And we're going to invite Mr. Gordon Palmer and Ms. Rebecca Welch to the podium.
Good evening, Chairman Walter, Dr. Kapicki, members of the board. We are pleased to report our results from our AP College Board college courses from last year.
So these results are a direct result, direct result, of the hard work and dedication that our teachers have put in and our students. And so I am very proud to present these results to you tonight. So in this first slide, you can see that over the years since 2021, we took a little dip in 2022, but the number of students who are taking AP exams and thereby AP courses is increasing. We're seeing a trajectory that's moving upwards. That also means that more of our students are challenging themselves by enrolling in AP courses. Additionally, the number of exams is increasing. This means that students who are taking one, two, three, or more exams is going up as well. And in fact, we've increased enrollment in 17 of our 27 AP courses over the past few years. Even more exciting is that the number of students who are earning that qualifying score of a three to get college credit is going up as well. And you can see, it's very light that there's a gray bar behind the blue bar. So that gray bar is the number of exams that is taken. And so if you look carefully, you can see that the distance between the gray bar and the blue bar is narrowing, which means we have more kids taking exams and more kids who are passing those exams. Here's some historical data since 2014. And you can see that between 2014 and 2019, we took a little dip. We came back up, back to that baseline number. COVID, we took a bigger dip, expected, right? And we came back from COVID and hit that baseline once again, 61% of our students being proficient on AP exams. But then what happened since 2022? Look at the trajectory of that graph. We've risen to 73% of our students who take AP exams are proficient, which is incredible. So our proficiency in 22 of 27 courses has increased. So what does AP look like in Cabarrus County? You can see here, we have 27 courses, and of those 27, 12 have at least 150 students enrolled in them. Some of our more popular courses include US History, World History, Modern, AP Psychology, and English Language. Not only that, but CCS, we outperform the state and the nation in many of these courses. All of the courses highlighted in green, and there are 14 of them. They all are courses where we outperform students at the state average, the state level, and the national average. Four of our courses meet that criteria for either the state or the national. And so with that, I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Palmer for more good news.
So with all these increases, we'd also like to highlight some individual schools that saw some incredible increases in their proficiency. If you look at the top three, they increased their proficiency by 10 or more percent. J.M. Robinson increased 20%, where they increased in seven subjects, they increased their proficiency. In addition to their number one course that increased was English Language, which increased 46% last year from the previous year. West Cabarrus increased 10%. Again, AP English Lang for West Cabarrus increased 65% from the previous year. When you look at Concord High School, they increased 15%. And what we saw there was they added AP Precalculus, and they had an 89% pass rate in that course. We are happy to report this year that all of our high schools offer AP Precalculus. This is a new course that came out just a couple of years ago, and we've seen tremendous success in AP Precalculus. Our overall pass rate for AP Precal in the district is 88%. Two schools that I would like to highlight that have tremendous growth there is Concord, I'm sorry, Cox Mill High School has a 99% pass rate in AP Precalculus, and Northwest Cabarrus has a 94% pass rate in AP Precalculus. So I was happy to present last year our increases. I'm happy to present this year our increases. And also, I hope next year, I am happy to present our increases in our AP courses. With that, we're looking at, what does this mean for our families? And what that means is, if you take how many qualifying scores we had over 3,000, and you multiply that by three, because typically you'll get three college credits or one college course worth of credit, and then you multiply that by the Chapel Hill rate for college cost, and you're looking at over $2.7 million worth of savings. But that is a very, I would say, low prediction because a lot of our courses count for more than three credits. So for example, several AP courses that count for multiple course credits when students obtain a four or five on their exam. So if you're looking at, for example, if you score a level, even at a level three in Calculus BC, you're actually awarded eight credits. So you're awarded Math 110, 129, 231, and 232. And this is looking at state articulation agreements with our universities. Level five in AP Chemistry awards eight credits, Chem 101 and 102 and the accompanying labs. So you can see, even if we took an average of four and a half credits, that would be over a $4.1 million cost savings to our families. All this to say, by our students taking these, by our schools really focusing in on these courses, we're saving our families a lot of tuition costs. Another point that I would like to look at is, not only are we increasing our threes, fours, and fives, or we can kind of call them our proficiency, but we're also increasing our ones and twos. So what that looks like is, when you score a level three, four, or five, the college says, you can basically skip that class. But if you score a level two, that's not necessarily a bad thing. When you look at College Board and their information, if you score a two on an AP exam, that's basically saying, you're college-ready. You are on college-grade level. You're not able to skip this course, but you're performing at college level, which is tremendous. And so if you look at our current levels, our level ones are only at 9%. So we're taking our students, we're getting them in AP courses, and 91% of them, after taking these courses, are ready for college. Two years ago, our level ones were at 18%. So we have cut that number in half. So that is really, really important to look at, not just the 73% proficient, but the 91% that are ready for college. So what is driving our results? We are encouraging our students, and there's lots and lots of options. So whether we're encouraging students for an honors course that can lead to an AP or a CCP course that could lead to an AP, we are encouraging our students to challenge themselves. We also have to give a huge shout-out to our counselors because they know all this information. They communicate all this to our students, to our families, they work with our teachers, they build master schedules and really tinker with all of the huge jigsaw puzzle that is a high school matrix. So huge shout-out to our counselors. Also, we send our teachers to summer symposiums, so we send them to be trained. Even if they've taught for several years, it is always good to get a refresher or if they're teaching for the first time, to go and get a strong network through the College Board. In closing, I would like to say that we have shared for two years all of our increases, but we are not content with that. We want to continue increasing our AP offerings, our AP success. So just recently, we have learned of three additional AP courses that are coming out, two of which are coming out next year, and we have already started researching them and communicating those to schools. So there's two courses that will be new. They are called Career Kickstart Courses, and they're more in the CTE realm, but they're advanced placement courses. And those courses are AP Business with Personal Finance, AP Cybersecurity, and AP Networking. So we are really working with our schools to see how we can get prepared for those, how we can offer those, which of our students are interested in those courses. They're also offering free training this summer, which we will send our staff to. And the last thing I would like to say is that this also connects right to our community because Eli Lilly endorses these courses. Matthew Chase, Senior Vice President at Eli Lilly, says, and I quote, "We believe students who demonstrate these skills through AP Business Principles Personal Finance credential are distinctively prepared with these skills needed to enter industry-aligned jobs in the workforce. We value these credentials as important qualifications, and will include them in position listings for internships, apprenticeships, and entry-level roles that we feel using skills-based hiring. Lilly strongly supports widespread access and acceptance of the AP Business Principles Personal Finance credentials." So we are very excited to learn more about that course and offer these courses to our students. And with that, we'll take any questions.
Okay, board members, questions? Ms. Sescobar.
Thank you so much for sharing. That's really great news. As a parent of a senior, I'm very familiar with trying to get credit for all these courses and things like that. I will say, what's interesting visiting colleges is that in this world that we're living in, it's very competitive getting into college. And I just learned this weekend, like weighted GPA is confusing. And so one of the things that they're doing is they're looking at rigor. Rigor means how hard are the courses offered at your school? And then are you taking those hard classes? So how much are you challenging yourself? So they were even talking about, it's not even so much that the grade, like you said, even if it's a two, it's okay, but are you the type of student who's going to challenge themselves? And so it's just really refreshing to hear that not only do we do this, but we do it well, and we offer it at all our high schools. You don't have to be in early college to get access to this. So I just want to say thank you, keep up the good work. I'm excited about those new courses, and it's nice to hear that corporate corporations in the community recognize the value that we bring with our graduates. So thank you.
Anybody else? Would you like to? Yes.
As a parent of a daughter who went into Chapel Hill on its two semester worth of classes because of AP, it is a great opportunity. I was curious, though, and they are a great value to parents here, along with the dual enrollment. It does help students going to college with credits already available for their graduation core requirements. But so how many students take the AP classes online? Because I know both of my children had actual teachers in the classroom for AP and online courses. And how much does each course cost in the county? Because we have to pay for those, don't we, as a county?
Yes. So our first priority is to offer the course seated. If there is an option or a course that, let's say, there's only a handful of kids that want to take that course, we can offer NCVPS. There's a different range of costs based on, is it a semester course? Is it a year-long course? Is it a summer course? They range from roughly $350 to $429 per course. I would say the vast majority of our students are in seated classes with our teachers. And typically, if you see a class at a school that has two students, then those are typically on NCVPS.
Thank you, and congratulations on these great scores.
Thank you.
Yeah. Sarah, I'm sorry. Sarah, yes, I think Sarah can add to that as well. We were just discussing this this morning. That's one of the things that's kind of before, in front of my mind. Sarah, according to Rebecca, thank you so much for the great work and the dedication to it. It's encouraging to see the results continue to improve as we keep always pointing to improvement. That's a, the thing that catches my eye is the 73%. It seems like that's the highest we've been ever. So I think these scores are telling a great story. And I want to emphasize, no disrespect to anybody here. And Kavia, I'd be remiss if I, I want you to understand that I agree and believe with what you said tonight. You are not a number, we don't judge you just by your GPA. I'm also not going to sit here and say that doing well is not important and that the academic rigor and the scores, we do aim to achieve the highest we could possibly be. And I know that's not what you were saying, but I don't want to be disrespectful to you and let you think that I didn't hear you this evening, I did. And I promise I will reach out to you and talk with you. You highlighted many very key, important things, so I appreciate that. So I just wanted to be clear that I'm not disrespecting what you said, but I am ecstatic that our scores are continuing to go in the right direction. And that's a compliment to you and your classmates and the hard work that you are doing, among the other thousand things you have on your plate. So thank you. Mrs. Reeves?
Yes, so I was just going to add, when we're talking about specifically online enrollment, we do leverage North Carolina Virtual Public Schools in certain instances when an AP exam may align with a post-secondary endeavor, and we don't have enough students to offer it. We also leverage Cabarrus Virtual Academy, and they are actually building out some of our courses specifically like Computer Science, which is definitely aligned to the online platform. So we would be happy to give you additional information on the course breakdown as well as the pass rate because we closely monitor that as part of programmatic review.
Mr. Tredaway?
Two things I'd like to share is that these classes are, they're expensive, and they're worth it. And when you look at average class size, that's probably not a good metric to use because special, whether CTE or this, it can be confusing. My point is, this is worth it, and it requires funding, and that's what I'm trying to say. I'm not opposed to it, I'm very much in favor of it. Our son went to, he was a second semester sophomore when he enrolled. And he had a great start because of the offerings that he had. he had a great start because of the offerings that he had. The other thing is that I remember as a principal, that we were looking to go from a six-period high school day to a block scheduling, I'm that old. And I remember visiting a principal in Ashboro, because they were kind of the frontrunner in block scheduling in North Carolina. And in the conversation, he was pushing all of his freshmen to what we now would call Math One. And he said, "Sam, a lot of those kids are probably going to flunk it, but at least they're flunking something worth flunking." And I'm not suggesting that we push kids so that they're not successful, but I find that kids usually meet the bar that we set, and I'm just encouraged that we are not cherry-picking kids so that we can raise our success average, that we are pushing more kids into those classes. And so I applaud that, because we tend to, not tend to, we can underestimate what kids are capable of doing. And I think this is a great example of kids meeting the expectations that they have in front of them with a good teacher. So thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Anyone? Melanie?
Thank you, and I do think this is a worthwhile program. Thank you very much. How, do you know the statistics for how many classes are taken online and how many are seated?
So we, we have those numbers. I don't have those with me right now, but we look at that so that we can make programmatic changes like Sarah was mentioning, as far as what courses do we want to build this summer that may potentially replace an NCVPS where we can do it in-house through Cabarrus Virtual Academy, or we can increase recruitment at a school to have that face-to-face with a teacher. But we can certainly get you that information.
Okay. The other thing is, do we have a need for AP teachers? Is that part of our, our concern for seated as opposed to online courses? Or is it just the online because you don't have enough students in the class?
I think we could always use more teachers, but it is, it is typically the, the interest of the students that, that, that fuel that.
So when you say we have all these courses offered at every high school, it's either seated or online. So in other words, there's not a gap in any school where these courses are not offered?
Correct. And, well, we have, we have a matrix of what courses are offered at what school, and I can share that with you, so you can see exactly what courses are offered there and how many students are seated in those courses. But that, that's what we, we typically look at. Now, what I was talking about is far as every single school has is AP pre-calculus, and that is something that we, we looked at and saw a connection to honors pre-cow, that every high school had honors pre-calculus. And the benefit of switching to AP pre-calculus rather than just an honors course was very obvious to us. So when we did that, those were all seated courses, and that was an easy change where we could switch that to AP pre-calculus.
So all the high schools that are listed on our website would have what AP courses they offer?
Listed on their website?
So if you wanted an AP course, how do you know if it's offered at your high school or not?
That's all through the registration process. So we start as early as next month registering students for classes for next year. So we compile all that information to build our master schedule. So we have a list of courses that are offered at the school, and if a student comes to their counselor and says, "I'm interested in this AP course," then they sign them up through registration, and then through that process of building a master schedule is where we determine, can we build this class, or we only have a few number of requests? So it is something that we will either put on Cabarrus Virtual Academy or on NCVPS.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, we appreciate the positive report, a lot of information shared, so thank you. All right, we'll move on to Section Nine, which is the approval of the consent agenda. There are a number of items on there that we all discussed last week, and we're okay with putting them on consent agenda, so I'll need a motion and a second to approve our consent agenda for tonight. Okay, thank you, Mr. Treadaway. Thank you, Ms. Escobar. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving our consent agenda, please say aye. Aye? Anybody opposed? All right, the consent agenda has been approved, and we'll move on to our action items for the evening. So we have a number of those, and we'll start with ten point oh one, which is the budget presentation and adoption for the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six year, and we'll welcome back Mr. Phil Penn.
Terrific, thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, Dr. Kapicki. Did not receive any questions regarding the budget in the interim week between the two meetings. We did cover this in some detail at the Finance Committee meeting, we did present last week. I'm going to move fairly quickly through the presentation, just to recap for those who may be seeing this for the first time. I hope it's not lost on anyone, the irony that fifteen days from today, we start the budget process for twenty-six, twenty-seven, as we're putting the, the final touches on, on twenty-five, twenty-six. Unfortunately, we still don't have a state budget, and prospects for that aren't great at any time in the near future, but we continue to move forward. I will make a comment around ADM, the Additional Growth Funds, based on the updated information we were looking at today, that's tracking closer to, I think, three-hundred-thousand, almost exactly, as opposed to three-thirty-one, but certainly directionally correct in terms of the number that's on the page here. We'll continue to monitor that as it comes in. You know, we talked quite a bit with the auditor last time around, around the diminished fund balance, and so we're fairly tight on money within this, but based on everything we see so far at this point, we're developing as expected, I would say. So our total budget at the local operating level of about a hundred-and-twelve million. Talked about fund balance, federal. Good news there is, overall, federal funds, the initial awards are up about seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand compared to where we were for twenty-four, twenty-five's initial awards. It means we could do more, but we can't supplant the existing local budget or state. You're not allowed to do that under the supplanting rules, right? So this is things we're going to do more of, and we did talk at some length around the plans for the use of these funds at the Finance Committee meeting. Looking at other budgets, capital outlay, total of a hundred-and-ten-point-two million. We went over the projects that, what that aligns to, and we did note that last week, the county did, commissioners did approve what we had shared with the board around realigning some of the maintenance projects, so that was good news. School nutrition, balanced budget of twenty-point-six million with a large cash balance, they continue to work to spend down. Kids Plus, this will be the only thing I want to make sure we're clear about. I think there may have been a perception coming out of the last meeting that Kids Plus is profitable. They're not. Kids Plus is using four-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand dollars of their fund balance this year to balance their budget. So that is essentially tapping into your savings account, as we've talked about before, our local budget, right, to, to make up the difference. They are sitting on a fund balance at this point that's fairly sizable, they have the opportunity to do that, but that doesn't last forever, right? So that, I just want to make sure we're clear about that. And then the Special Revenue Fund, just to make the, the point again, anticipates a worst-case scenario of about a one-point-four-million-dollar use of fund balance. Again, I think there are significant upsides in terms of our revenue within fund date. We've already seen some of that come through with the sales tax refund coming in significantly higher than what we had budgeted for, and Medicaid remains the biggest wild card within that space. If everything came through, we'd be significantly above the budget of revenues for fund date. So, you know, there's still a lot of unknowns, we're looking at the state budget at this point. You know, we do have a few more PRCs that have not dropped yet, they tend to drop later in the fiscal year, so we'll be back with amendments around that, and, you know, we're already starting to work on the first set of amendments, because we've told pretty much everybody to hold them until the budget's adopted. You know, this becomes our sort of stake in the ground, and then we start doing amendments against all that work. But as we've talked about last week and continued to work on, it's about generating a surplus and rebuilding, rebuilding the fund balance going forward. So if we could flip quickly to the other document that's got the actual budget resolution in it, that'd be great. While we're trying to pull that up, the total budget we're asking the board to adopt tonight is for five-hundred-and-thirty-six million, five-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars, and you'll see that that's balanced between, there we go, thank you, revenues and expenses at this point, and you'll see the various breakdowns. Just to be clear for the online viewers, for the State Public School Fund, they provide about half of our total support, two-hundred-and-sixty-two million. Local operating, a hundred-and-twelve, federal grants, sixteen-point-six, and that includes the carryover from the prior fiscal year. Local special revenue, just under eleven million. So, you know, the total operating budget, you can call it four-hundred-and-one-point-six million. Capital outlay for the various projects is just over a hundred-and-ten million. Our, our two big business-like enterprises, child nutrition at twenty-point-six, Kids Plus at four-point-one, and then the agency fund that we serve as a custodian for the one scholarship fund that's out there, taking you again to that total of five-hundred-and-thirty-six-point-five million that we're asking the board to adopt tonight. And with that, we'll be happy to take questions.
Okay, and I know we've discussed this at least three times, but did want to cover again, we anticipate the state to give teachers a raise as part of this budget. We prepared for three percent, all right?
Correct, that's right.
So if it's a three percent raise, because we've got to fund the locally-funded positions, so those would be covered, and then we also have to fund our teacher supplements, so if raises go up, the percentage goes up, so we have to make sure that we cover that. So at three percent, we're okay. If it's higher than that, though, we have to go back to the county desk for help.
That's correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that, that, that part is clear, cleared to everybody. And anybody have any further discussion or questions?
Well, I proposed, I propose that we adopt the budget resolution as presented.
Okay, so I've got a motion by Mr. Treadaway, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Escobar, okay, any further discussion? All right, let's vote on, on our budget. All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Anybody opposed? Okay, the budget passes.
Terrific, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Penn. Okay, we'll move on to ten point oh two, which is the submission of the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school improvement plans for all our schools, and we're going to bring back Dr. Jonathan Bauer. And Ms. Sarah Reeves.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening once again to you, sir, and members of the board, and Dr. Kapicki. As you recall, last week, Ms. Reeves and I had an opportunity to bring before you our comprehensive school improvement or our continuous improvement framework, if you will. Obviously, we had shared with you some of the procedural steps that had taken place over the preceding months in the development of this year's school improvement plans, and part of that framework was the development of our school improvement plans at the school level. We were able to share with the board some of the resources that we had, some of the supporting documents that accompanied said plans, so we are here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, and if I'm a parent or somebody wants to see my school's school improvement plan, where do they find that?
Great question, sir, thank you. You can go to the school's website, and if you click on the link on the school's website at the top, there is a dropdown that says "About Our School," and within that menu, there's a direct link to the school improvement plan.
Okay, outstanding. Okay, we have had time to review these, we talked about them last week. I'd need a motion and a second to approve the school improvement plans as presented. Thank you, Ms. Escobar. Thank you, Mr. Treadaway. Any further discussion on the school improvement plans? Okay, all in favor of approving them as presented, please say aye. Aye? Anybody opposed? Okay, those plans are approved for this year.
Thank you.
Moving right along, we're at ten point oh three, and these are the calendars for the next school year, so we have one for the traditional and one for the early college, and we'll bring up Mr. LaGrande, welcome.
Thank you. Chairman Walter, good evening, everyone. Dr. Kapicki, just bringing for you once again the calendar revision, or the calendar proposal for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Mr. Schu did a great job of, of laying out the details just last week, and just wanted to bring forward, we did not receive any questions or inquiries over the week on the proposal, so I wanted to bring it back for your review and approval.
Okay, no families have reached out?
We've received no inquiries or questions from anyone this, this week.
Questions, just for other discussion, or if not, we'd need a motion and a second?
Mr. Chair, I enthusiastically support this new calendar.
I figured you would, Sam.
Okay, this is both calendars, right?
Yes, both.
So both calendars for the traditional and the early colleges, and Ms. Escobar is going to second that. Okay, anybody else have any comments or questions on that one? All right, let's vote, all in favor of approving our calendars for next year, please say aye. Aye? Anybody opposed? Okay, they've been approved, so those will now get put on the website and announced it.
Yep, we will, now that it is approved, we will start getting the word out immediately.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, up to ten point oh four, and these are the Annual Program Choice Review and Recommendations, and we had been asked to break them up, so we have six of them. We will go through each one individually, we'll have an opportunity to make sure that we understand what we're voting for, and then I will ask for a motion and a second for that particular recommendation. So again, we've got Ms. Reeves and Ms. Whitaker at the podium, and we'll start with the recommendation. The first one is magnet seat availability at Patriots Elementary School to be expanded through program choice. You want to quickly overview for the public what, what that one was?
Absolutely. So this would include the ability to open up magnet seats for families that live outside of the neighborhood boundary at Patriots STEM Elementary School based on demand, and increased availability with already resources that exist within that school.
Board members, do we understand what we're being asked to approve? Okay, if so, I'll need a motion and a second to approve that recommendation. All right, Sam, we have a motion, do we have a second? Thank you, Catherine, so we have a motion and a second to approve the magnet seat availability at Patriots Elementary School. All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Anybody opposed? Okay, so that is a six one. So our next one, recommendation, is Comprehensive Evaluation of the International Baccalaureate IB Programming at West Cabarrus High School. Want to go through, let us know what that one is for the public.
Absolutely. So this is going to specifically evaluate the inter-baccalaureate program at West Cabarrus High School specifically without the NYPD program, so to really, truly evaluate what does success look like with and without the NYPD program in terms of return on investment with the existing inter-baccalaureate program that exists at West Cabarrus High School. So at this time, it would not be making any decisions on the inter-baccalaureate program, but rather giving us the ability to comprehensively evaluate, to come back to you all with next steps in terms of the data collection process to make the best decision moving forward.
Is there a cost to that?
It will all be internal, so no, sir. Yes.
Okay, board members, do we understand what we're being asked? Greg?
We're trying to figure out something, this is kind of related to the next one, too. We're kind of trying to figuring out what the demand is and what programs need to be continued, maybe what programs need to be rolled back. We talk about marketing these, these programs, especially like the IB program. Can we use data, or maybe we're already doing it, use data to identify students who are in other schools who maybe would benefit from that program, and then provide that to the administrators or the counselors at West Cabarrus, so they can actively recruit into those programs?
Absolutely. We could certainly do that as one of the mechanisms if we believe based on the data findings that that would be the case. Currently, right now, West Cabarrus High School does not have an open magnet seats for inter-baccalaureate, it is the pipeline from Winkler and Weddington Hills, but certainly we will be looking at all avenues to be able to inform our decision on how to get the maximum return on investment with this program.
That may be applicable to the next item, too, when you're talking about marketing, say the hospitality programs, things like that, even the new program at Concord Middle.
Absolutely.
Maybe, I think, if we have the data available, we can utilize it in that way, so we can actively recruit as opposed to just maybe social media or other communication channels that are more passive.
Okay, anybody else? Do we understand what we're being asked about for? Okay, I would need a motion and a second.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Treadaway, do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Freeman. So we have a motion and a second, that the comprehensive evaluation of the IB programming at West Cabarrus High School be conducted through the program choice to determine a four-year IB pathway. So all in favor of that one, please say aye. Aye? Anybody opposed? All right, that one passes as well. To the third recommendation, which is, this is the marketing efforts for the hospitality and architecture academies, and it'll be enhanced through program choice, and that the pilot, there's a pilot for flexible enrollment in the public safety academy. Can you give us a brief overview of that, so we understand what we're being asked?
Sure, absolutely. Absolutely. Specifically within the marketing efforts, this is already built into our budget, but it's doing strategic targeted marketing and then tracking that data to be able to provide updated supports around student enrollment. In terms of the opening for the public safety, this is very similar to how we run our current nursing fundamentals program through CTE, where students would be able to attend any of the traditional homeschools within Cabarrus County schools and provide their own transportation to Concord High School if they would like to participate in the Public Safety Academy.
Okay. Questions on this recommendation?
Ms. Reeves, when I taught at Concord up until not too long ago, I thought students were able to already do this.
So my understanding is that at some point, the decision was made to only allow students at Concord High School, so for the last couple of years, that's how it's been operating, and as a result, we want to increase numbers and opportunities for students, so, yes.
Okay. Board members, if we're, if someone's comfortable with making a motion?
I'm prepared to make that motion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Treadaway. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Escobar. So we have a motion and a second that the marketing efforts for the hospitality and architecture academies be enhanced through program choice and that the pilot for the flexible enrollment in the Public Safety Academy be implemented for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Are we ready to vote on that? Okay. All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Anybody opposed? All right. That recommendation passes as well. So we'll move on to the fourth one, which is the program choice partner with the Pearl to establish an early college-style program focused on artificial intelligence and health care. Give us a brief overview on what we're being asked to vote for there.
Sure. Absolutely. So this is the recommendation to begin a micro school around the programmatic theming of AI and health care with the possibility of expanding to rapid prototyping, using an industry partner to create unique opportunities for our students to be able to go into workforce pathways, specifically as it relates to designing curriculum that could then be replicated across all of our schools, but this would be specific to a guaranteed experience for the students in this academy to be able to provide not only the ability to pursue a CTE concentrator and data analytics, but also engage in weekly experiences at the Pearl Innovation District in Charlotte.
Okay. And we had quite a discussion about this last week. Dr. Capicki, you had some additional information on transportation. Do you want to share that?
Yeah. So the transportation cost, it was initially quoted at twenty thousand dollars. We noted that this weekend in the update to the board. The Pearl is going to pick that cost up, so it's going to be no expense for transportation either. So as Mrs. Reeves has pointed out, most of our expenses are going to be internal that we can cover, and we have no external expenses on this program.
Okay. Any further questions or comments from board members? Ms. Freeman.
Is our understanding that this was presented to Charlotte MECC first, and that they turned it down? Is that correct?
I have, I have not heard that. I'm not aware of that.
Okay. So is there going to be any, I'm thinking, funding? Well, when you're handling a grant, usually you have to hire people to handle the grant. Will there be any of that expense for, for us with that?
There will not be any expense on our part for any type of grant that we would be able to seek through this process.
So you're promising no expense for this program at all?
I would say we have existing expenses to be able to serve the students of Cabarrus County. That is what would be included in the micro school, provisioning teaching staff for students, those types of things. But in terms of expansion costs, there would not be anything that we would not be seeking out outsourced sources for.
Okay. Dr. Capicki wants to add.
Yeah. Everything that we're going to cover is within budget.
Okay.
Okay. Shannon?
You know, I just want to say, I think this and the other new ones are great programs. I just don't think financially, this is a good time. Our auditor told us last week, we have literally no wiggle room for new programs, and be careful. I think these are great programs. I don't know if financially, this is a good time to add these to our plates, so just, this was a year or two now, maybe, but we only have one point five million dollars left in our fund balance. We're looking to add new AP classes to our courses next year, so I do think this is a great program. For me personally, I don't think it's a sound financial time to add this.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Langkaster. Anybody else? Pam?
I just would like to lift up what we heard today in public comment, which was the importance of partnering with, with people. The reality is, is that we want to be the place that people come to, to partner with, and so when we sit, when people give us this amazing opportunity for our students, if it's right for us, and I think this is, we should say yes, because once you start that pipeline, others will come to us as well. At least, that's my hope. So I just appreciate that a member of the public shared that with us tonight. I think we need to be future-facing and understanding that we can follow or we can lead, and this is an opportunity to lead. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Escobar. Anybody? Ms. Moore?
I'm assuming this program will be part of our annual reviews.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Okay.
All right. Well, we've got our questions answered. We know what we're voting for. We do need a motion and a second.
I'll make that motion that we adopt the program with the Pearl.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Treadaway. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, Greg. All right. So we have a motion and a second, and this is for the program choice partner with the Pearl to establish an early college-style program focused on artificial intelligence and health care. All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Anybody opposed?
No.
Okay. We have two noes. But the majority to that, that one is approved as well. We'll move on to recommendation number five, which is that program choice offer a new middle school option, the Academy of Global Innovation at Concord Middle School beginning next school year, featuring a specialized pathway that enables students to earn up to four high school credits prior to ninth grade, and please give us a summary of that, so the public understands what we're voting for.
Absolutely. So this is a unique homegrown program that we've worked with in partnership with Dr. Auerbach and his leadership team to talk about a programmatic theming that will attract students from across the county, and will marry the STEM programming that students get to experience in all of the elementary feeder patterned schools, as well as possibly dual-language immersion into the interbaccalaureate and CTE programming that exists currently at Concord High School.
Comments, questions on that one? Okay. Well, we understand what we're being asked to vote for. I do need a motion and a second.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Treadaway. Second by Mrs. Freeman. Okay. So we have a motion and a second that the program choice offer a new middle school option, the Academy of Global Innovation at Concord Middle School beginning the two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, featuring a specialized pathway that enables students to earn up to four high school credits prior to ninth grade. All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Anybody opposed to that one? Okay. That one passes. And the last recommendation we have here is that Cabarrus County Schools launch a tuition-based pre-kindergarten program at Bethel Elementary and Patriots Elementary School. Can you give us a summary of that?
Absolutely. So this would be opening up thirty-six seats for students in Cabarrus County schools for a pre-K four-year-old program at both Patriots and Bethel Elementary School. On this program would only open if we had enough interested applicants, at least sixteen, to be able to fiscally run the program with any, without any cost coming on to the district. This could consist of CCS staff members, outside families, or voucher or subsidy support.
And that is sixteen at each school, or thirty-six at each school?
I'm sorry. Thirty-six total.
Total at both schools?
At both schools.
All right. Board members, questions and comments on that one? Greg.
I'm sorry I didn't get your questions sooner, but this, a lot of this comes out of a conversation that I had today, so I just want to clear some things up. You, you, you're saying there's three hundred and fifty applications for NC pre-K, and we're trying to address that. Are there, do the existing daycare centers not, are they not able to offer pre-K? Are they not licensed to offer NC pre-K?
I, I can't speak to all of them. I can get you additional information, but what I can say is that's just a data support to show the early hot childhood demand in Cabarrus County schools.
I guess what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to get, wrap my head around is, apparently, the Cabarrus Health Alliance made a presentation in which they said there's something like nine thousand licensed seats in Cabarrus County, and something like four thousand of them are full. So we're, we're at less, less than half the capacity for childcare in Cabarrus County, so I'm wondering if there's something special about pre-K that makes this necessary to add capacity in that specific area. But that's, you know, we don't, this is last minute, so you don't have a chance to research. I appreciate that. The other thing is, you know, it was expressed to me that the barriers then is not capacity, but cost and having teachers to be able to be in those classrooms. And I'm not sure that what we're doing helps address either of those issues on the private market. So my concern is that when we come in and we say there's already all of these licensed spaces available, and these private entities, they're, they're already at a cost level where it's prohibitive for families to come in and be a part of their pre-K program, and they don't have enough teachers to be able to staff their daycare centers. We come in and are we taking, we're going to be at market rate, we established that last time, so we're not driving the price down for anybody, so we're not addressing that price problem directly, and are we taking anybody out of the pool of teachers because working in the public school system would be a more attractive position in terms of benefits and everything else than it would be in those private sector daycare centers?
I can't speak to the applicant pool. I can only tell you that, you know, what we have had anecdotally is the data and the support to say that families would be interested in expanding pre-K opportunities in Cabarrus County schools.
Dr. Capicki wants to respond.
Sure. Yeah. I would just say that I, for me, and I'm speaking for me only, I strongly recommend this just because you're going to put these kids in front of our teachers, and our teachers are the best. It's, for me, it's just that simple. You put kids in front of our, our kids, I think some of the data you've seen over the last couple of months just speaks to the excellence that exists here in Cabarrus County. You know, I get the, I get the market and the competitive rate, but our job is to advocate for our kids in the public school system, so any, anybody I can get to come into the system and, and put a child in front of us as Cabarrus County Schools teacher, I think is a win for us. And I'm not knocking anybody out there, and there are excellent programs all throughout the county, but as I've always said, and, and will continue to say, continue to advocate and, and, and say it loud, our teachers are the best. I want our kids in our county in front of our teachers because the results speak for themselves. So any chance we can to put our kids in front of them, I think is a win for us. And for this, I understand some of the concerns, but it's not going to cost us anything. If we, if we don't get the numbers, we, we, we don't have the program. We get the numbers, we get the program. And the numbers that are, the kids are already here, that they're, it's already been demonstrated, they want to come here. So I would just say to our Board of Education, any opportunity we can take a child in Cabarrus County and put in front of our teachers, to me, that's a win. That's a giant win across the board, so I would strongly recommend this, and that's what Hannah Rice stands for.
Okay. All right. Greg, back to your question.
So without question, we have excellent teachers, and I have no doubt as to the value of pre-K programs. My wife is, has a degree in early childhood. She tells me all the time how important these programs and how beneficial they are. I would, I'm completely in support of these programs in terms of how they might address at-needs communities, at-risk students, right? It was kind of the way we've done it before, so sort of prioritize people that need these programs. And then secondarily, we've provided these as a benefit to teachers, so we're able to provide this service to them at a reduced cost and maybe keep them in the profession, whereas childcare might have pushed them out otherwise. And so those two reasons, one hundred percent, I believe in pre-K, I believe in those priorities. What I, what I have a problem with is the expansion into a tuition-based platform and competing in the private market. And the reason I have a problem with that is because those are already struggling. The healthcare, the childcare situation in the county is difficult, not just in, for four-year-olds, but from birth to four-year-olds. And so if we make this more difficult for these businesses, we, we run a chance of exasperating the problem of child, finding childcare in Cabarrus County. And it's not because of these thirty-six students, but what I'm afraid of is sort of setting a priority, this becomes a proof of concept, that we can run this tuition-based program, and we want to continue to expand that in other schools. So if we were specifically saying that we wanted to expand this, we wanted to add these seats because we were going to address at-need, the students that have special needs, at-risk communities, we're going to provide this as a benefit to teachers, you know, maybe that's that cost, I would be fine with all of that. But when we start to create sort of our own private daycare centers that compete with the private market, that, that's where it becomes difficult for me to agree.
Okay. Ms. Escobar.
This would benefit how many children?
It would be thirty-six students.
Thirty-six total.
Right now, in this proposal.
And, and we're charged up here to care about the children in our community, correct? Sorry. You don't have to answer that.
Okay. Anybody else? Ms. Langkaster?
Go ahead.
Ms. Moore?
Are these teachers and teacher assistants going to be paid on the state scale?
Yes, ma'am.
So that would be more than private daycare pays?
I can't speak to what each daycare center pays.
Yeah. I guess I also heard the same presentation that Mr. Mills is referring to, and it, it did leave me with a lot of concerns about this program.
So our school system had a deficit for two years in a row in the budget. We're down to one point five million dollars in the fund balance. Like I said, these programs sound great, but I don't think this is a financially sound time to add anything else to our plate. Revisit it a year down the road, two years down the road, but right now, sitting here, I think we need to get our financial, financially in order, and then we can add programs like this.
Did we get our questions? Sam?
First of all, the, it's been a long time since I did pre-K as a parent, but the biggest variable for us was location, and I know at least, well, I, I'm guessing both of these locations would be an opportunity for parents that they may not have right now. And I guess I'm a little confused is that we have said we're, we would not even consider this if we didn't break even, so I don't understand how that could be, that's where I don't, I don't understand where that's coming from.
So Shannon, did you get your?
I don't think you, there's never a break even, Sam. This is going to cost us somehow and some way.
That's not what I'm hearing.
Well, in my opinion, this will cost us somehow, some way. There's nothing ever cost neutral, and that's my opinion.
Sam?
I'm just saying, that's math. That's all I'm saying, is that if we can't make it cost-effective, we wouldn't do it to begin with, is what I'm saying.
All right. I think we got our, we got our points there. Greg?
So the, the center that I was speaking to today was close to Patriots Elementary, where we're looking at expanding. So when we're talking about location, this center near Patriots Elementary, half of their fourth, four-year-old slots are empty right now. near Patriots Elementary, half of their fourth, four-year-old slots are empty right now. So those parents who are looking for that have that availability right there in Harrisburg, and then again, to location, the second location is in Midland, and so I'm not aware that we have a crisis of need in the Midland community for this either. So again, I, I support the program, I support pre-K and the concept of it, it is this competition in the private market that, that is the trigger for me, and I understand adding a tuition is what makes it, makes it profitable so that you can say that this is a break even, but I would rather, I would rather spend the money on those students that are in need, have our teachers coming in at cost, and not put additional pressure on those daycare providers, because again, that's not going to affect just the four-year-olds, that's going to affect birth through, or birth through school age, and one more time, the four-year-old is the most profitable age group that they have, so they may be losing money on the babies because they're counting on being able to keep them until they're four. And again, it's okay to say we're only adding 16 seats at each of those, but my understanding from previous conversations is this is a proof of concept, we want to show that this can work so that we can expand this, and I know Kopicy has said specifically he would like to see one of these at every single school, and so I'm just saying, these are my reservations going through a tuition-based model for this larger expansion concept that has been floated.
Ms. Escobar?
So we can't charge more than what, we, we are charged by the state to provide public education for K through 12, so we can't charge for that, but we can for this, correct? Okay, and so the benefit to our parents, so I'm thinking, I mean, it's been a while as well for daycare, but, you know, when you have more than one, it's super convenient if you could drop them both off at the same bus stop, if they could both, you know, come, they can look out for each other, they can watch each other, that kind of thing, so is this full day pre-K, and would these children be on our transportation as well?
This would be full day with the opportunity to provide extension opportunities depending on interest, we would not be providing transportation.
Okay, other questions? I guess may personally, at least for Patriots anyway, that, you know, we have, we have capacity issues in Harrisburg, I think the seats really need to be available for expansion or possibly moving students, I don't really want to use seats at Patriots unless concerned with Bethel, but those are more my concerns, we don't get ADM funding for these, these students. All right, I think we all understand what we've been asked to approve, the recommendation, I would need a motion and a second for that.
Send it.
Thank you, Ms. Escobar, thank you, Mr. Tretaway, so we have a motion and a second that the Cabarrus County Schools launch a tuition-based pre-kindergarten program at Bethel Elementary and Patriots Elementary Schools. So are we ready to vote for that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Two? Anybody opposed? No? Okay, so that, that recommendation does not pass at this time, and that was the last of the six recommendations this time? Okay, so thank you very much, we will move on to our next item, which is 10.05, and that is the North Carolina School Board Association's Annual Meeting and Delegate Assignments, so we have the opportunity, you can't register at the time, at the meeting, you've got to do that in advance, so any of us going that want to participate in the delegate assembly, we need to name you at our meeting today, so I guess it starts off with who's going to be at the delegate assembly, or at the NCA, NCSBA Annual Conference in Greensboro on Wednesday, November 12th. And I don't think I will be there that day. Anybody?
I think I am.
I can, I can too.
All right, so potentially Catherine, Sam, Greg, are you going to be there?
I signed up for it. Yeah, I'm there.
So we have Greg, Sam, and Catherine, anybody else going to be there on that day? You are? Nope, I'm not either.
Are we registered for that day? Will we be registered now?
Who is registered? I'm the only one registered for that day.
Okay, certainly currently it's, Greg is, you're going to be there, we have potential Sam and Catherine, if they, we get up to four. So if you want, want to participate, we will make sure that you get named, you get named, right? That's how it works, and even if you're not there, I guess it's, can we, can we name if, if you're not going to be there, you may not?
No.
All right, so let's go to that item. If you can bring that up for us so we can see. One of the items is a schedule, the other one is the actual form, so. I think that one's a schedule, or the agenda. All right, so we have four names, we're going to name three, looks like three.
I don't think we had, whatever, however many we could have, I don't think we had that many last year.
Okay. Well, one's, you know, at least we got some representation on what the decisions that they're making, so we're going to add primary voting delegates, Mr. Mills, Mr. Tretaway, and Mrs. Moore. And that'll be the motion, all in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? All right, that was our last action item for the evening, we do have a need to go into closed session, and that is, I'll read that short today, the Board convene in closed session to consult with Attorney pursuant to General Statute, Section 143, 318, 11A3, and to consider confidential personal matters pursuant to General Statute, 143, 318, 11A6. Somebody make that motion for me?
Send it.
Thank you, Greg, do I have a second? Second by Ms. Lancaster, all in favor of moving into closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? All right, we will say goodnight to the listening audience, and see you next month.